...that are dealing with this issue in one way or another, so we're not different in that regard. Several of you had asked about getting an item on the agenda related to code enforcement, what we're doing, in particular with the advent of our Crime Control District and the code enforcement officers that were part of the budget in that particular fund and how we're utilizing them, and what kind of changes are being made. And of course, Cleve Joyner is here today to walk you through that process and what's being done. I think you're aware that Cleve now has the code enforcement activity. Cleve is our building official and the division's head in charge of this group, and so it's not only the building inspection group, but the code enforcement inspections group. One of the reasons that we wanted to do that is so that we could have cross-training and better communication between some of the folks that are at the field looking for nuisances and some of the things that code enforcement officers do with the people who are having a field looking at buildings and letting codes permit issues. At one time, we were all basically separate, and what we are trying to do is unify that to some degree and get everybody kind of pulling together since a lot of those issues overlap. So that's the purpose of this, and I'll let Cleve walk you through the presentation, and you have plenty of time to ask questions, but basically right on schedule here, so you've got plenty of time to put this on, and you can take as much time as you need and go through your presentations. So with that, you can proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon. What I'm going to discuss with you today in the overview are the review of strategies and programs, which was one of the requests. What are other cities doing? What are other programs doing? Update on the initial implementation of the 215, how we're going to be involved in that, and how code enforcement tends to augment the 215 program. Also, we're going to discuss in short some performance measures that we feel are very important. And we've basically got a lot of this information from reviewing the city of Flowermount and their TML presentation, which was given to us. Several classes, there's some literature that's gone around to the council and to my staff in regards to suggestions on improving code enforcement. There's a lot of other documentation and literature in other cities, and a lot of it's very similar. Everybody does something different, but we kind of took everything together and reviewed it and wanted to make sure that what we had was specific to us and would benefit us and the city of Louisville.
By the way, Cleve referred to Mr. 215, that first of the fund number, or the Crime Control District. So I've only said Mr. 215.
You said Flowermount.
Farmer's Branch, yes.
Thank you.
And I'll start from there.
Okay. And then we're also going to talk about the new software, which council approved, which thank you very much, because it's a very powerful software that will really enhance the programs. Okay, some of the universal techniques that we're asked to look into, there's several. There is an American Association of Code Enforcement. Last year, their award was to Hillsborough County, Florida, for the Dirty Dozen brochure, showing the most often or the most common violations. When I researched this, there's many cities throughout the United States that use their own version of the Dirty Dozen. We actually have six. We've little it down, and that's on our website and also in a handout that we give out to when we talk to communities and neighborhood associations. Operation Paintbrush was another one that was highly recognized. That's where the community was able to, or the city was able to give donations of paint. The citizens would come in and sign documentation, agreeing to paint their home, and then they're given the paint for free. That seems to be a pretty decent program. Other universal techniques are neighborhood gatherings and initiation, or initiative programs. Neighborhood gatherings, similar to what PD did with code enforcement and meeting with groups and gatherings and gift-getters, and then initiatives similar to Keaton's beautiful, where they would go through and document what they did in a couple of days, whether it's fixing up houses or fixing up communities, clearing fields, clearing brush. Those are some of the initiative programs to look at. Neighborhood homeowners association reports. A lot of communities put together reports specific to that particular association and give monthly reports to those folks, letting them know how their subdivision or their area is doing. Website Q and A is a big one all across the board. We have something similar. Citizen volunteer code enforcement, or code rangers. Some communities use them primarily to augment any kind of budgetary constraints or budget problems. It has its benefits, but it also has its cons. A lot of it is the training, making sure they understand what is allowed by law to enforce, or to report. A lot of our citizens that we interact with daily aren't particularly happy to see us, so sometimes you can put a volunteer in a kind of an unusual or awkward situation. We certainly encourage citizen involvement, and we get about 2% of our code enforcement issues we get from complaints or questions. And what we try to tell citizens is, if you see something that you don't think looks right, looks bad, just report it, and we'll take a look at it. Shaming is another technique, good, bad, and ugly. I'm not a big fan of that. I don't know that I would, as a citizen, you know, if I was having some kind of financial problems or if I was having other issues that wouldn't allow me to keep up my property, to be pinpointed or embarrassed. So we feel that that's appropriate, but it is being used. And to some degree, what we're going to talk about, what Farmer's Branch does, could be construed as shaming, but I don't think that it really is.
I think a lot depends there on how you go about putting the information out. It's one thing to say that a site has had numerous issues or problems, and if you've attempted to resolve those problems over an extended period of time, just put it up there as top five violator or something. It's another thing if you start couching that in terms of, you know, who they are, or what they are, or why the property is in that kind of condition. You just have to be very careful. Like, you know, Cleve, I'm not a big fan of that type of thing, but it may have its place.
Use of tablet PCs and smartphones. Technology's made huge advancements. This is in here because actually Farmer's Branch used the iPads when they first came out and started this program, because they found they could do a quicker job of taking the photos of the residents, which we'll get into, and then putting it into the file in real time, and they were able to just do a quicker, faster job. You can record. You can record conversations. It's just unlimited what it can do and specifically when it's integrated with the New World software. Lot by lot inventory, which we'll talk about. That's the farmer's branch program, and interpreting the data for performance. So this is from the Crime Control District's public hearing June 16th. This is the performance of the strategies associated with code enforcement. Use code enforcement, building inspection, and police provide a teamwork approach. Initially, it was to hire two code enforcement officers and one building inspector to kind of marry the two, bring them together, because the two actually are working quite well now, and in the future, it is very luck for cooperation and work and teamwork. And two code enforcements would allow additional enforcement patrol districts. Then to quote Mr. P, what he said earlier in an email, June 4, 2012, "Creates more efficient and effective communication enforcement efforts through the merits of building codes slash inspection activity with nuisance and zoning code activities since these areas overlap and through cross-functional utilization of personnel." So at that time, the decision was to hire three code enforcement officers. So when we took a look at it, and we started looking at the strategies, this is one of the performance measures for year one, or a group of performance measures for group one, group, excuse me, year one. Initially, it was to expand the current number of code enforcement districts from five to seven. We expanded it up to eight, and we're referring to them as zones. Reduce the patrol miles per officer to 6.14. One of the things we noticed is in those square miles, there was the lake, so we took the lake square miles out because code enforcement doesn't do much on the lake, and we're able to further reduce it to 4.5 miles of square miles of code enforcement areas. Increase the percentage of residential properties achieving voluntary compliance. That's ongoing, but we feel we can do a better job with that, and we feel we can do a better job with that with the new software. Have residential property based target areas, non-building code violations and conditions within one year, and that process actually started August 12. Sat down with the staff of code enforcement. We discussed on what can we do now to get the ball rolling, to get everybody used to this new way of doing business. And so before we hired the three, the rest of the code enforcement officers just jumped right up and took on what we had discussed, and they bought in, which was very pleasant. Year two, performance measures, increase the percentage of residential properties achieving code compliance after the first certification. We are tracking that currently. You'll see some statistics on that. We are pretty high in our, I think we're like 95, 96% within seven days or less. And then increase the percentage of residential properties complying to specific target areas, which we're working with PD currently to establish those target areas, identifying the zones we have, the subdivisions, what we have for crime reports, and just trying to make those work to fit. Increase the frequency of code enforcement sweeps in the districts. We've expanded to eight. That's ongoing. We've had discussion that once we move into the next portion of this program, that will, at one time, will concentrate on a zone. We may have four code enforcement officers in that zone, and I'll explain how that works later, going door to door and taking an inventory. Inspect, investigate, study, research, and administer all high, medium, low priority building code violations and/or conditions. That starts with completion of the database, because we want to make sure we have our quantitative inventory so we can begin the process. These are your code enforcement officers. Tom Strange, 11 years of experience. Mark Brown, nine years of experience. Kerry Correa, 14 years. Senator Gilder, 11. Bottom left-hand corner, Bobby Shearer, 15 years. And three new code enforcement officers that we recently hired. Eric Duane, he has four years. Comes from El Paso. Andy Barbara, he has 10 years. I think comes from Azul, Fort Worth. And Tim George, 14 years. I'll talk about Tim, because Tim was part of the Farmer's Branch program when they started kicking their inventory. So he's been very helpful in me understanding, helping all of us understand how that program works and is successful, which he feels is a successful So here's the eight zones, and then I have the code enforcement officers in colored zones. These polygons are going to move depending on what we have, but they are, we're trying to attach them to geographic areas so that we incorporate in those zones subdivisions and commercial properties. This is Jackie Davis, who's in charge of the eight officers. Jackie's been here, he has 22 years of experience. I talked about when they initially started the process on what can we do. They reviewed what council was considering and reviewing, and so they started an inventory, property and building inventories. OD 1, 2, and 3 is outbuildings. How many properties have outbuildings? And then you can see up to the right hand. Now, this started in August, so I asked for six months with the data, which was in December, so we don't have. And it's been increased, but this is to give you an example of what they were looking at initially. It's outbuildings, per property, carports, garage conversions, and then taking in those totals. And this is by address, so that when we get New World, we can put it into the GIS portion of New World and have those documented. And then there will be additional inventory on commercial and residential. It's not specific to residential. This will be all community, all properties in Louisville.
Does New World integrate into the ministry software?
That's an IP question. My understanding is that it does.
There's an AP under that.
We started our interaction with the police department in regards to the crime district and what we can do together. In October, we started with bi-monthly meetings, code enforcement police managers to discuss the cooperative efforts and what the objectives were, short and long term. Code enforcement has been reviewing crime reporting and those statistics. Chief Curro's given us some great locations to find what we think we can utilize. And then code enforcement is to overlay the property surveys and building conditions to the geographic data of the crime zones. Again, that's probably more realistic every one year. Develop and administer code enforcement, basic training to the PD to enhance reporting. We have had three classes with supervisors. We have six classes now with patrol, and traffic is ongoing, because there are a lot of, there's police officers out there that want to be able to know what is allowed and what's not allowed and report it, and so we've started that interaction on what we do in code enforcement, what we look for, and then kind of build that relationship. And then we decided that, let's take it a step further, and let's build what we call problem property units, to hold problem properties in the property owner's account. So we define the PPU, and that's, it deals with problem properties that have dilapidated and substandard buildings due to poor maintenance, neglect, fire, storm damage, including those that have a history of numerous code violations. And then each unit would be one neighborhood resource officer from PD, one building code inspector, and one code enforcement officer. And what they would do is either, depending on our inventory, what we currently have in stock is inventory, and what we have once we start our documentation of each property, could be three, could be four units. And what they'll do is they'll identify what the issues are, whether it's repeat offenders, if there's some kind of socioeconomic constraints, if there's any kind of crime that's going on at that property, and then resources, look at resources to fix the problem, whether it's through CDGP, or through local neighbor groups, or loan programs, or some sort of assistance that you can give people. Because a lot of the times when we have problem properties, it's because people have either inherited it, can't afford to take care of it, they've had a significant loss due to fire, they don't have any insurance, and so there's all these other items that they'll be looking at. And then tracking the substandard process. You're familiar with our process where we have to make notification, and then we have a public hearing. If it gets that far, if we don't get compliance, they can appeal the process, may go to district court, but at the very end of the day, they'll be reviewing those and tracking those, so that they can take a lot of that work that the code enforcement officers and the building inspectors are doing, and as a group, work on those, which will give more time, in theory, to the people on the street to pick up more violations. Maintain the database for reports, timeframes to compliance, and identify issues relating to a timely resolve and possible improvements to the process. So they'll be also, part of their responsibility, will be reviewing the process, seeing if there's any way to streamline the process and make it easier. And then link code enforcement, PD efforts to minimize blight, lower certain crime activity that's associated, and this is kind of your broken window theory, which, a lot of reading on broken window theory, and it's pretty interesting stuff. Controversial in one way or another, but it has its value. Changes to the code enforcement activity. We've expanded their role to the property maintenance, building property maintenance enforcement. They're all now studying the property maintenance code, and you will see in the adoption of the property maintenance code, that will be part of, depending on what portions are adopted, what we currently have that code enforcement uses as tools and whatever laws we have. Substandard buildings, vacant abandoned foreclosures, legal non-conforming properties. We want to get a database of legal non-conforming properties, more likely to be commercial properties, but that will help all across the board. That will help ED, that will help planning and zoning, that will help building department. We just want to be able to, over time, identify those properties. And properties with variances. There's a lot of times I'll go out and somebody will ask me if they can make their sign bigger, and I'll wonder why it's on the property line, and then I do research and find out that in 1992, I've got a variance from council to be on the property line or close to the property. So we want to try and find and identify and have a database of all those places with variances. Home occupations. Code enforcement officers have a database now of home occupations, and it's, as they're going through their communities, if they see any activity that's unusual, or if they have a complaint, they keep a database of those occupations. They actually talk to the residents, tell them what they can and can't do, but we want to have a database showing those. And it may come down to that you have to register your home occupation, which you currently don't have to. Assigned to the PPU, also develop reporting and educational presentations, all the data collection and monitoring problem properties, which are new to code enforcement. Indicators of best practices. We also looked at ICMA to see what they had, and that was mentioned in the Farmer's Branch presentation. They had quite a bit of information. I'm going to go to the next slide, because it's the same slide, but it just has in bold what we're doing with those performance measures. Average response time and calendar days for additional inspection code violations from the most recent fiscal year. Best to be measured by violation type and the percentage. Average time and calendar days for processing from inspection to report either voluntary compliance or initiation of the administrative judicial action. Two parts to that. We're going to measure it again by type of violation percentage, and separately, the administrative judicial process. We want to review the impacts on administrative judicial process, because we feel, once we gear up with this inventory, that we are going to have an impact on the judicial administrative process. So we want to make sure that we monitor and look at those in regards to FTPs and other areas, areas in need. And then we want to monitor the reduction of days of compliance. Currently, it's 94% less than seven days or less. There are some state codes that require 30 days. Inoperable vehicle is a classic. We tell them, you have seven to 10 days to remove it, but we cannot issue a citation until after 30 days. So we're more or less culling their luck. They can leave it there for 30 days, could keep giving notice, but we can't issue a citation by state law until 30 days have passed. Number of code violations resolved per time equivalent code enforcement officer, or code enforcement personnel, to be measured against the base of each FTP and for the violation type. There was a study that Farmer's Branch involved many of the cities, I think it was, I want to say 1999, 2000, in regards to what was the cost per code violation to the city. And so we want to resurrect that. And that cost of code enforcement cases, we're going to try and include the support staff and the PD in that, because those are components that are a cost to the city that could be overlooked. This is the Farmer's Branch program. Jim Oak made the presentation. He's a building official for Farmer's Branch. I spoke to him on the phone several times. He shared his presentation with us, and I took from that what I thought was really beneficial. I can show you the whole program. This, in a nutshell, I think will explain what they've done and what we like to do, because we like the tool and the process. They actually grade, this is for the house specific, or the building specific. This is the grading process. If it's a really nice home, you'd want to buy it. If it was on the market, if it's an A, if there's slight deterioration, weatherproofing, roof needs replaced, there's a few issues with it, it gets a B grade. Then it goes down further, the worse it gets, it's a D. The examples, I think they're the next one. Obviously, A, this house is for sale, so it's going to get a grade A. Some of them do, but that's not, these are all in Louisville , by the way. The B grading, you can see the deterioration of the wood siding, but the roof's in pretty good shape. C looks not as bad as B, but the roof's wavy, the roof needs replaced, and the deterioration of the wood is all around the structure. And then B, this house is actually in the substandard process. It's been in the substandard process a couple of times, because it goes from owner to bank to owner to bank. Now it's with the bank, and we're working with them. This is also something that we started doing. We're boarding these up, and I'll talk about that a little later, because right now, we're just, we're trying to find funds that we may have extra money to buy the plywood and go board it up, because we're trying to keep these places for people going in. And we post them. This was a sad case, because we actually have a lady who used to live there who's now living in the garage in the back, in separate garage. We're working with the bank and try to get that resolved, but it's a long process. That may be ending up in E, whether it gets into substandard processes, close to the D, because some of the Ds that are bad may have somebody living in or outside.
So when you do that on that D?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it illegal for people to enter that once you've done that?
We post it, that nobody's to enter the building, because it's not safe. There was a fire in this particular one. There's a hole in the roof. The inside of the structure is, what do I say? There's health issues on the inside of this structure, so anybody who enters into that is going, the firefighters had to actually decontaminate themselves after they came out of that structure, because there was a lot of, a lot of.
So we did find people there, we can?
PD, yes.
PD.
Had to decontaminate because of why? She had, she has three dogs that are free rein in the house. I hear her. So that's a scenario. So when Farmer's Branch takes that color code grading system, they go individually by property. Granted, they have a smaller city, but this is achievable. And you can see the green, you can see the yellow, and you see the red. And then this is a really good indicator, and Tim George told me that it really worked well for code enforcement, because they were able to identify the areas of potential blight and the areas that were actually in blight, and put their focus into those areas. And the other part of that is, for city council, and I'll bring it up again, but city council, citizens can look at that map. You can narrow it down with our new software to your subdivision and see where are the areas of concern. This is a good tool for everybody. And then I'm hoping to do overlays, so that you could actually put it in motion and see that green, all the yellow go away. It's a dream, but it's a vision, I guess I should say. And just those change in colors, depending on the age of the communities, it may move all over. Now, if we did this with, I don't know that we'll do this with grass and weeds, because everything would turn red, and about two weeks later, it turned back to green. You know, it just depends on the season. But it's a really good indicator and a good tool. Now, we take the property condition, which is what Farmer's Branch does. You may have a really nice house, but you have yard conditions that aren't good. You don't have a yard. You have half the grass, you have a lot of weeds, trash and debris, outside storage, inoperable vehicles, stunts, driveways. A separate map for each one of those types of violations, so that we can look at them. And they do theirs every two years. They compare theirs every two years. You look at this one, this is about traction, so you can see where trash and debris. It's really not bad if you look at it on a percentage basis, but at least it identifies the areas where you can put your focus. And you know where your code enforcement's efforts have been. So this is the New World software, tying the geography to accountability. Good performance management system that yields the necessary data for assessing service needs and performance, and helps elected officials in their oversight responsibilities. I didn't write that. There it is. Also helps to make objective resource allocation decisions, formally policy. Performance of a specific service can be tracked over time to demonstrate improvement, or it can be benchmarked against levels of service provided in similar communities. Openly sharing patterns and varied data is an effective way of strengthening elected officials' credibility with citizens. It's also a way of strengthening our credibility with employees of the city of Louisville. The implementation and integration of successful geographic information systems, GIS, has helped the administrators close the gap on deficiencies and develop performance plans that are results-driven, linked to the agency's goals. Fundamental to the capabilities of GIS is its ability to measure, track, and manage workflows. Successful implementation comes from organizations that master technology in the organization's business goals and objectives, which is what this software will do. Tying that geographic accountability to the PD units and the Crime Control District. We utilize the property surveys, the building surveys, and the crime reports to track geographic areas, the eight zones, and try and marry those two, the crime reporting and the property surveys. Analyzing and interpreting the data to determine over a specific period of times, has the program made a difference and how big of a difference? We utilize the data gathered for quantitative and qualitative statistics. Quantitative being what we want to measure, grass and weeds, cars, condition of the home. And quantitative statistics meaning, how many did we have, what was the period of time, how much utilization of FTPs. And quantitative statistics meaning how many did we have, what was the period of time, how much utilization of FTEs should be used. We want to measure the degree of change by zone-to-zone comparisons. We want to develop ongoing process to ensure consistent data with annual inventories and violation review. We're going to try and do this annually. Measure the relevance. Are we addressing the need, the effectiveness? Are we achieving the goal and objective? Are we being efficient, maximizing our results with the resources we have? Results and impacts, changes versus intuition. When I came here, it's been a while now, seven years, eight years ago. From that time till now intuitively, I can look and say, well, yeah, it looks better than it did, but I don't have anything to really support it. And that's what I'm after, to be able to really support it and demonstrate it to council and to the citizens. And then sustainability, ongoing program evaluation to make sure that it continues. The new software will also allow citizens, enhance citizen and city involvement. Citizens can go on to the New World. They can look and see if there's any complaints. They can look and see what the process is, if they're, where they're in the process, whether it's substandard. They can also look and see if a building permit's been issued. Everything's in real time with the software. Data is real-time, ongoing, and that helps code enforcement, it helps PD, it helps everybody. If they look up the address before they go up to the front door and they see that animal control was there two or three hours ago, and there's a dangerous dog and an irate owner, then they may want to call for PD to come before they go talk to the citizens. Or they'll see what's happened the day before, the police was there, or a fire was there. And then cross-disciplinary uses, just basically better customer service. Everybody, I mentioned ED would be able to use this tool, everybody involved in the city. So internally, it's really a much better process, a much better program. Considerations, implementation of a board-up program. We don't have a board-up program. We find funds where we can and go board these buildings up. It would be nice if we had some funding to be able to just go purchase it, have it budgeted, so we can show where we're using it. We go now and we try to retrieve it. There's been a couple of times where we weren't able to retrieve it, so we're reusing it. We're being green in our use of our board-ups, but it's working, but we'd like to see more of that. Hopefully, over time, we don't have to board it up as much. But after a fire or after a major storm, it would be nice to have that tool. Consider an aggressive repair assistance program. We have properties, some that I'm familiar with, Grove Road, where it was closed on. There was a blue tarp over the roof for about two years. The most we got out of the bank is they replaced the tarp. Fences fall over, the properties become in bad disrepair because they're basically just left and they continue to deteriorate. So if we had, similar to our reeds and grass program, if we had contractors that could come in and fix the fence because a panel's fallen over and security are, if the roof needed repair, they're repairing it so that that condition of that residence or that building doesn't continue to deteriorate, paint, siding, etc. Consider the tablet PCs, the smart tabs, gain efficiencies, and also adopt hotel, motel inspection ordinance. And I threw that in only because when we started the multifamily inspection program and then piggybacked with that single-family residential program, which July first will have been in place for five years, the report back I got from code enforcement was because we meet with the tenant, give them a brochure, and here's what the expectations are as far as keeping this property up. So code enforcement will stay out of your hair what we expect of the condition of the interior of the property. They've had less enforcement activities on single-family rental units than we have in stock. So this is just another part of the system that will help move towards that.
Yes, sir.
The board-up program.
Yes, sir.
How does that overlap, duplicate, work with what our fire department does? Because my understanding is that the volunteers actually do a lot of that.
After a fire. Yeah, it's usually after the fire. Now, a couple of the board-ups we had has been a week or so after the fire department's left it. And so I can't speak for the fire department, but.
So those are two separate?
Two separate, yes, sir. And I think they're, I can't speak for them, but I know that car crashes through a business, they board it up quickly so to protect that, those kind of things. But and maybe we, maybe as part of their board-up program, we piggyback onto that. You know, I don't know, but I haven't had a whole lot of interaction with that process.
And of course, fires aren't the only reason that you might be able to board up a property.
No, no, of course not. But if they've got something that's working, why duplicate?
Sorry.
If they've got something that works, we can piggyback off that or make sure we're not duplicating effort or?
Yeah, it'd basically be the same thing. And we could be proactive in the sense that people who want the property boarded up can call us and we can act and board it up, or we can do it as part of a enforcement action that we even have a lien attached to it to recover costs at some point in time.
You mean like the bill to mow people's yards?
Yeah, same concept.
I would assume a repair assistance program would be something like that as well, depending on the situation for the individuals.
One of the tricks on the boarding property is that obviously notice, adequate notice, opportunity to correct, you'd be able to provide. The types of property you get boarded up or covered up, might be, maybe even better term, is something that requires a bit of judgment. The material that was submitted to you recently by a local citizen, for example, there was a piece of, there was a property building which basically was an old barn. And the barn may not have even ever had doors on it. And it basically is sitting out there. It looks abandoned. It's a barn, basically. Is that something that we want to go out and board up? Maybe, maybe not. Again, there's some gentleman associated with that. Preferably a lot of good communication with whoever owns the property. That's oftentimes the problem, that we can't find anybody that can represent the property adequately. How do we get on the property? How do we board up someone's property without their permission? So it's a, it gets pretty tricky, pretty quick.
And most of the time when we board them up, we do have permission. We had a homeowner in Walters, which we just recently demolished and we leaned the property. And that was constantly being broken into, vandalized, windows broken, and the neighbors were just asking us to do something. So I contacted the homeowner, Alex and Miss Georgia, and she asked us to, it was her father's home, and she asked us to go ahead and board it up.
And sometimes property owners will have properties that's vacant. They don't want to board it up for variety reasons. It may not necessarily be a problem. So not, just because the property's vacant doesn't mean we can go out and board it up.
Right.
So again, the judgment associated program has to be.
Probably have to show that truck looked like.
Exactly. Problems, actually demonstrable problems.
One of the things, excuse me, that I left out was the adopt of vacant, abandoned, and foreclosure ordinance. Several cities have them. It would be nice if, they require you, if you have an abandoned building, a vacant building, or a foreclosed structure, to report that to the city so that the city can know it's there before it does get blighted or the conditions worsen. And then I'd like to see it taken a step further where we would be able to actually go onto the property and maybe without probable cause, with their permission, by signing a document, go into the backyard, make sure no windows are broken, that if there's a swimming pool, it's not full of green water and, you know, just manage, basically manage the property and keeping it updated and maybe tell the property owner, here's some issues, and they either fix it or again, going back to the aggressive repair assistance program, maybe something like that. Just suggestions.
Oh, something like that. What kind of timeframes do you put in that for it to be abandoned?
Well, it's, my CEO for buildings vacant, or GDO for buildings vacant for more than twelve months, it has to comply with all the new rules and regulations. But what we see with the foreclosure, foreclosed properties is that if people either leave and then it's fine, and then a window gets broken, or somebody in the neighborhood realizes that it's vacant, been vacant for a long time, newspapers piled up all over the door. Code enforcement will actually go up and pick up those papers and kind of stash them to the side so it doesn't look so bad. But, you know, some way of trying to keep that in check so it doesn't continue three months, four months. It really depends on the condition of the property too. Because I know the one that was in foreclosure, I believe on Grove, was of storm and she caused a hole in the roof and some other issues. And then the fence panels started falling down. It was one after the other.
You keep looking at me? Yeah, I know the house.
Yeah, I know, brother. You and I had that discussion. It's in your neighborhood.
Yeah, it is. And it's very difficult. There's several houses like that. There's the one that was on fire, but again, late earlier this year. And it's still just, it's got police picked up in the yard and it's been boarded up finally. But yeah, I mean, obviously nobody's doing anything or there's no insurance to repair it or?
Well, in those cases, and similar to the one on Garden Ridge College, that one went into foreclosure, the daughter didn't want anything to do with it. So then we finally, we finally have an owner now. And it's been six months since the fire. And we now have an owner. We just sent a first notice today. So there are proper properties, just the PBUs would be monitoring, managing, maybe trying to cut that timeframe down.
Well, and being able to, without burning up kind of man hours, be able to let residents know, hey, this is going through process. You know, I understand you guys, your focus is to move it through process. Your process, it's not to inform me that my complaint is moving through process, it's to move it. So I like that the software at least allows our citizens to come back and say, hey, this is moving or there is progress, or there's not, raise a flag.
We get like a point on some of these properties where they actually try to be even more proactive. A good example of that is a two-unit townhouse on.
Corporate?
Corporate, yes. Just west of one twenty-one, you've got basically two owners of a building, split down the middle by a property line. It's a townhouse. One side, very nicely maintained.
Duplex, right?
It's like a duplex, yeah, except it's a townhouse. You have, literally have two owners. And so one side looks fine, the other side is unbelievable.
Paint worn off.
Oh, paint worn off, weeds, the whole gamut of problems. And what they've done in that case over the course of many months in cooperation with legal in an attempt to hopefully find another owner for the property. I don't remember what the circumstances were.
She died.
Okay.
She had paid cash for it. She died. Nobody wanted anything to do with it. And then over time, it ended up having ninety-six thousand dollars in back taxes, but it was only worth about sixty thousand dollars. So nobody could buy it. Nobody could get it out of tax sale. And so working with legal, we're able to come up with some ideas, and I've been working on it four years now, to try to get it resolved. It should be resolved soon.
I think we found a purchaser and we could definitely finally out the book. But to illustrate how problematic some of these can be over time and how much time is associated with resolving them.
Try and find the owner on one on Grove to consider a chunk of time.
Pretty, yes, sir. Trying to get a word made with you. First of all, I went to that Farmer's Branch presentation. I walked out with a whole new religion. I knew that y'all had hired new people. I did not realize how much of that approach you had adopted. I know now. And I also didn't know that you'd hired one of the people. And if I saw your map correctly, you decided the whole town, is that correct? The Farmer's Branch? Yeah. So let me just say this. Apparently, he found the same religion. And I find that very reassuring because everything I saw in Farmer's Branch approach in their presentation convinced me that they were on to something. I mean, they had some ugly problems and it was still, there's still some whack-a-mole that goes on, but they were able to cut that way down. So, you know, this, first of all, this is very reassuring. The other thing I was going to ask you about though, and I was going to point out you skipped on to it and you said, well, I skipped on to it. But we just got a ruling off the Supreme Court for Stewart versus Dallas, and it's not good. And my understanding in Dallas is that they're, they put like a team of lawyers together and they're going to try to review things and, you know, make sure that the risk to the community exceeds, you know, the value of the property in order to legally just, in all respects. I mean, where are we? Because we can't be doing all that.
We didn't have to amend the ordinance because the way it's written, we're good. We're just waiting thirty days to see if they, before we demolish, after y'all find it substandard. Once we wait that thirty days, we're fairly comfortable that we get around this sort of problem.
Really? It's not what I read, when I was reading the?
You know, these should still, none of this happens with them, to my knowledge, that's.
Yeah, everybody's waiting for somebody to pull the trigger.
Right. But we're fairly comfortable that we can review the parameters set by that decision.
Are we doing something similar to the Dallas approach to make sure that we document that the threat to the public exceeds the value of the property?
Yes, we've told, we've spoken with Clayden Aaron. We've told him how to document it so that if we had to take it to court, we would have the evidence we needed.
I just, I had, because this just came down, what, a few weeks ago? And it's just pretty recent.
Recently, we've been reviewing the process and the state law on the process. We feel, we feel.
All right. Otherwise, I'm excited.
I am too.
Glad to see the software sets the baseline for you guys, because that to me seemed to be the one you had to.
On the tablet PCs, what we've been really waiting for is IPS has been looking at the types of hardware they want to deploy and getting much closer to that decision. Larry's here, maybe you could sit down with him. He's currently testing out a couple of different types of units that would be very applicable for that use in the field. And we anticipate being able to hold those very quickly. So in fact, leaves people maybe among the first to get those units. So we had been of windows tabs and things like that. We've got a lot more to pick on.
Can I ask a question for you, back to that question about the integration with Esri? So is that in the works or?
The new implementation, actually, we can take off next week. I can't tell you the entire schedule at this point in time. But certainly an integration with our GIS system is a component of the implementation, the overall implementation.
Okay, but no, you don't know about a timeline or?
Give you a couple of weeks. We're working through that. Company end of time. We've got the financials too. There's some coordination issues, but.
Because it seems cornerstone to.
It is.
Quite a few of these items here, you know, the integration with French statistics and the ability to report to public what's going on, you know, change over time and all that stuff, so.
As soon as we work through a schedule, I'll give that to Mr. King.
One addition that council will misalign, so the code enforcement terminology, they'll still go, they'll still be adding fire inspector database, engineering construction database, sanitary and database, so all those inputs per address on inspections will be going into that. Environmental control, so there's going to be animal control. There's going to be a lot of data that they will put into that. It'll be really exciting.
You had mentioned home occupations.
Yes, sir.
Are you saying that about the people who have, they basically have residential house, but they're basically offices? Is that what you're talking about? Or are you talking about, what do you mean by home occupation?
Well, we're documenting where, we find out where somebody may, somebody may complain that the delivery truck comes once or twice a week, or something going on there other than. We'll just check and we know that that's a home occupation. We just document it. But then we also have where all the landscape trucks show up at five-thirty in the morning at a specific residence, and somebody complains, we go by and observe it. Then we go tell them that you can't do it, but we still document that there was a home occupation that was, that we needed to keep an eye on there.
So see, there's somebody watching CBS online, buying whatever the shopping network is, or someone having all the trucks come in evenings, that's what you're talking about? I don't know. You're asking both or?
We're talking about illegal home occupation. You can have a home occupation. You can have a business, you probably. There's nothing wrong with that.
No, no, I mean, I don't really do that. I mean, what I'm saying is, so you're basically looking for people who have all the trucks and the, they're just kind of like starving instead of getting a?
Or if we notice that there's boxes always stacked out front where they may have something in their garage that they're building and they're moving, we just ask them what they're doing and if it's just there for a day or whatever, and nobody's complaining. We just document it that it's there in case somebody does complain.
Yeah, so it's clear you can have a home occupation, but when you begin to have the evidence. the evidence of home occupation, of a business being, there are like delivery trucks, the people showing up and parking their cars, the people coming and going, that part is illegal.
I hear you.
You can't do that.
I can.
You can do a business all day long, and your house is long, and nobody can tell.
No, I understand the difference, I mean, I understand the difference because I've seen it where, like you were saying, you know, with the, in the morning, all the trucks leaving, at night when the sun goes down, they, they parked in my yard before, and I understand that, so. New guy, he didn't know it was the next household.
We just try to document those, keep data base, so you're not wrong.
Someone come together, they'll be okay for a while, and then all of a sudden, you start seeing uptick in activity, and they will remind them, and they will fall back, and so they're gonna go.
Okay, good, I don't mind it, it's good, it's good.
Some of those things you had up there are the cost features to them, some of them really didn't. Can you get us some cost projections or some of the things, the boarding up, the, you don't have the iPads yet, but the pads or tablets, whatever you're gonna use, get us some cost projectors on those so we can see what that'd be.
I've got, I've got no, as far as the considerations take, I've got no issue with looking forward on any of those, there's nothing there that looks like something I wouldn't want to lose this floor.
Thank you.
We can get those all going as quickly as possible.
I see what it did with Farmer's Branch, I think it's.
Yeah, the consideration change.
Kind of got the New World app website.
Davey, your name's on the software, I'm not necessarily in the initial sector, but now we've just purchased it, we just want to contract.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know, I'm pretty sure you could detect the excitement that they're handling in being able to have a software system that gets some things done that they've never been able to do before. And we're, we really have high hopes that this thing will give them a lot more tools than they used to have in the past, and provide the public with a lot better information than it does in the past. So, to that, it's a thank you to the council for, for funding it, if it wasn't cheap. And now we're in the implementation phase, we'll get that done as quickly as possible.
Looking forward to reassuring those, but I mean, we've kind of got a case study that has proven that it's a success.
Yeah.
You know, so we're not taking, it's not, we're not rolling dice, we're gonna find out, will this maybe work? It just makes sense.
Okay. Okay, the next topic is the last part of the consideration.